Good evening. This 78th meeting of the 72nd term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Please turn off all cell phones or put them on vibrate. Tonight's invocation will be delivered by Dr. Sandra Connor from Shepherd's Heart Missionary Baptist Church. Following the invocation, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
The word of God says that we ought to, men and women ought to always pray, so let us pray. Father God, as once again I come, Lord God, first of all, just say thank you for your grace and your mercy. Thank you for your indying love. Thank you, Father God, for loving us all unconditionally. Thank you, Father God, for looking beyond our faults and always seeing our needs. Thank you, Father God, for allowing us to go to bed last night to get up today, Father God, for another day, another opportunity to do things differently. But, Father God, I'm called here today to call for our Baltimore City Council members, to pray for the leaders, Father God, who are accountable for enacting laws and ordinances for the city of Baltimore. I pray, Father God, not only for them, but I pray for their families, Father God. I'd like to call out the names, Father God, that you might really hear who I'm talking about. Father God, I pray for the City Council President in Brandon Scott. I pray, Father God, for Zeke Cohen. I pray, Father God, also for Danielle McCray. I pray, Father God, for Bill Henry. I pray, Father God, for Ryan Dorsey. I pray, Father God, for Isaac Schleifer. I pray, Father God, for Christopher Burnett. I pray, Father God, for John Bullock. I pray, Father God, for Leon Pickett. I pray, Father God, for Edward Reisenger. I pray, Father God, for Eric Casella. I pray, Father God, for Robert Stokes Sr. I pray, Father God, for Sharon Snead. I pray, Father God, for Mary Pack Scott Clark. I pray for them, Father God, calling out their names, Father God, that I know you all already know them individually, but, Father God, I just want to call out their names again, to let you know, Father God, that these are your children, Father God, who've chosen to serve your people. Now, Father God, I pray that you'll continue to give them wisdom, give them guidance, give them direction, Father God. Let them, Father God, continue to lead your people, Father God. Let them continue to love on your people the way you have called for them to love on your people, but, Father God, let them learn how to love themselves, first of all. Let them learn to take care of themselves, Father God, because sometimes, Father God, I believe that the road and the load has got to be hard for them. I see the stuff that they have to deal with on a regular and daily basis. I pray, Father God, you cover them, Father God, from the top of their heads to the bottom of their soul. Let them not grow weary. And, Father God, if should they get weary, let them realize that your word says, "Come, my yoke is easy and your burdens are light." Let them come, Father God, always willing to turn everything over to you. I pray for their families, Father God, their children, their children's children, Father God, that they too might allow them, Father God, to be, to do the work that they must be able to do. I pray for their staff members, Father God, the ones who do the work behind the scenes, Father God, that sometimes may not get the recognition that they so worthly deserve. I pray, Father God, that there'll be men and women, Father God, that will never forget their call, never forget the reason why you gifted them and set them in a place that for such a time as that. Let them, Father God, be able to move forward. Let them, Father God, not grow weary when they say or say they can't do it, when they say or says all kinds of manner of things about them. Let them know, Father God, that they're about your business, Father God, that you called them for such a time to do the work the way that it is. And I pray, Father God, that those of us who are in the city of Baltimore, wherever we may find ourselves, will lift them up, Father God, when they feel like they're about to fall. Let us be able to lift them up always with a continued prayer, a mouth of thanksgiving for what they do. Let us be able to encourage them, Father God. Let us be able to motivate them, Father God. Let us always show some love. Let us always let them be encouraged by you, Father God, in your word. You said, Father God, that they ought to always do just, and we pray, Father God, that they do that. We pray that their conversation will always be with a listening ear, Father God, that they might hear your people, that they might be able to do the work that you've called for them to do. In Jesus' name, I pray this prayer. My soul says amen and bless God.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's showcase Baltimore presenter is Esther Armstrong from the San Kofa Children's Museum of African Cultures located in my home neighborhood of Park Heights. Good evening.
This is the first time I'm doing this, so if I start shaking, you know why. My name is Esther Armstrong, and with a small army of volunteers, we have been able to set up, in the Park Heights area, the first Children's Museum of African Cultures. Some of you were, well, some of you honored us by attending our grand opening on February the 1st, and I thank you. I feel very honored to be standing before you. Some of you have been part of our journey, because over time, we have visited some of your offices to try to get guidance as to how to proceed and who to talk to. And I might mention a few names. I know we visited Mr. Christopher Burnett. He probably doesn't remember us. We visited Dr. John Bullock. We have talked to Mr. Robert Stokes, who has provided us plenty of guidance, because at one time, we were in his district. But now, we have moved to the district of our leader, Ms. Sharon Middleton. And I hear she's the vice president of the City Council. So, thank you very much. What we are about is this. We have realized that there are all kinds of problems with the youth all over, but especially in Baltimore. We feel that part of this problem is the lack of self-esteem, and we are trying to bring to their attention who they are as a people. What we are trying to do is educate children, and adults too, by the way, about the history and cultures of Africa. Some of these children, all they hear all day is how bad they are. All they see about Africa all the time is how bad everything is. Children, poor children, with their, you know, distended stomachs and this and that and the other thing. If I was a child and I heard this or saw this all day, I wouldn't be one to be from Africa either. So, we are trying to show them that before slavery, there was a whole history of Africa and Africans and what they have contributed to society and the world at large from then until today. So, they have every reason to be proud of being called Africans. For the rest of the community, we think that learning about other cultures can only help, because you're afraid of what you don't know. Once you know about something, chances are, you'll be more accepting of it. And this should bring some harmony to our community. So, that's what we are doing. I would like to introduce Deborah Mason and my husband, Jim Clemmer, who have been working tirelessly since 2016 to get this together. We have no money, so they are not getting paid. Who can I talk to about money? Really, if anyone is here who is able to show us the right direction to go, to get some of this Baltimore Youth, Children and Youth Fund, I would like to talk to you, because we really are struggling. We have opened a beautiful place, but we need to be able to sustain it. We are raising funds, but it's hardly enough. So, that is really all we want you to know. What we are doing, those of you who did not, were not able to visit us at our grand opening, this is your opportunity to come see what we are doing. I would think that you will be impressed. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Armstrong. Before you go, don't go too far. I would like to present you with a resolution for the City Council congratulating you on the open of San Kofa. I would hope to tell you that you would know and recognize that we are proud that such a fine institution is in Baltimore and the first of its kind is in Baltimore City, something I think that we can be very proud of. And as I spoke to you on Saturday, for me, it's extra privileged that it just happens to be located directly across the street from my childhood home. So, knowing what used to be there and what that means for me and what it meant for that community, to now have something that does the exact opposite and uplift the community and uplift the history of the people in that community, means a lot to me. So, I'm going to read this out to you and present it to you very quickly. City Council of Baltimore Resolution. Be hereby known to all that the City Council of Baltimore offers its sincerest congratulations to the San Kofa Children's Museum of African Cultures in recognition of your grand opening and establishing Baltimore as America's first and only children's museum truly focused on African history. Their entire membership extends best wishes on this memorable occasion and directs this resolution to be presented on. This is actually backdated from that day, first day of February 2020, signed by myself, Council President Brandon Scott and all members. The clerk will call the roll of the members.
President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisenger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark. Mr. President, we have a quorum.
Thank you. We will now proceed with the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the Journal of the February 10th, 2020 proceedings on the council members' desks.
Without objection, the journal will be adopted. The journal is adopted. Executive nominations.
EA 20-0260, Kari Davis.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee.
EA 20-0261, Kimberly Grade.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee.
Mr. President.
Oh, sorry, we're going to go back. Executive nominations.
EA 20-0260, Kari Davis, member, Commission on Disabilities.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee.
EA 20-0261, Kimberly Grade, member, Commission on Disabilities, District 4.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee.
EA 20-0262, David Greenberg, member, Commission on Disabilities, District 5.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee.
EA 20-0263, Michael King, member, Commission on Disabilities, District 2.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee.
EA 20-0264, Adam Levine, member, Commission on Disabilities, District 14.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee.
EA 20-0265, Yohende Paxton, member on, member, Commission on Disabilities, District 12.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee.
EA 20-0266, Eric Stevenson, member, Planning Commission, District 9.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee. Bills to be introduced.
City Council Bill 20-0496, Records Management, Modernizing, Correcting, and Conforming, for the purpose of repealing and replacing city code provisions regarding Baltimore City Records Management Program, to conform to state law requirements and to reflect modern practices in records management. Establishing the position of city records management officer to coordinate citywide records management, setting forth certain duties of the city records management officer, requiring city agencies to provide certain cooperation to the city records management officer, providing for the manner of the proper disposal of certain city records, defining certain terms, and generally relating to the management of the records of Baltimore City Government. Sponsor, City Council President, on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Equity and Structure Committee.
City Council Bill 20-0497, Zoning, Conditional Use Parking Lot, A Portion of the Property Known as 201 Reed Bird Avenue. For the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the establishment, maintenance, and operation of a parking lot on a portion of the property known as 201 Reed Bird Avenue as outlined and read in the accompanying plat, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, City Council President, on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Land Use Committee.
City Council Bill 20-0498, City Streets Opening, Two Three-Foot Alleys Bounded by Tyson Street, Wilson Alley, Park Avenue, and Mulberry Street, for the purpose of condemning and opening two three-foot alleys bounded by Tyson Street, Wilson Alley, Park Avenue, and Mulberry Street as shown on plat 303-A-18 in the office of the Department of Transportation and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, City Council President, on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill 20-0499, City Streets Closing, Inlows Avenue, excuse me, Inlows Alley and Two Three-Foot Alleys Bounded by Tyson Street, Wilson Alley, Park Avenue, and Mulberry Street, for the purpose of condemning and closing Inlows, excuse me, Inlows Alley and Two Three-Foot Alleys Bounded by Tyson Street, Wilson Alley, Park Avenue, and Mulberry Street as shown on plat 303-A-18A in the office of the Department of Transportation and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, City Council President, on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill 20-0500, Sale of Property, Two Three-Foot Alleys Bounded by Tyson Street, Wilson Alley, Park Avenue, and Mulberry Street, for the purpose of authorizing the mayor and city council of Baltimore to sell at either public or private sale all its interests in certain parcels of land known as the former beds of Two Three-Foot Alleys Bounded by Tyson Street, Wilson Alley, Park Avenue, and Mulberry Street, and no longer needed for public use and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, City Council President, on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 20-0501, City Streets Closing, Air Rights Over a Portion of the Public Right-of-Way of Rogers Alley, for the purpose of condemning and closing the air rights area over a portion of the public right-of-way of Rogers Alley as shown on plat 313-A-23A in the office of the Department of Transportation and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, City Council President, on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill 20-0502, Woodbury Historic District, for the purpose of designating the area located within certain boundaries as the Woodbury Historic District, providing for planned unit development review by the Commission for Historical and Agricultural, excuse me, Architectural Preservation, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, City Council President, on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill 20-0503, University of Maryland at Baltimore, approving the, approving application for designation as a RISE Zone, granting enhanced local property tax credit. For the purpose of approving the submission of an application from the University of Maryland at Baltimore, a qualified institution under the state's Regional Institution Strategic Enterprise Zone, RISE Zone Program, approving and joining in the application for designation of a RISE Zone along West Baltimore Street identified as Ward 4, Section 060, Block 026, 029, 035, 036, 037, 038, 039, 040, 041, 042, 043, 052, 053, 053A, 053B, 053C, 053D, and 053E. Ward 18, Section 090, Block 0220, Lots 001M. Ward 18, Section 100, Block 0203, Lots 110, 116, 117, and 199. Ward 18, Section 100, Block 0202, Lots 014, 016, 017, 019, 020, 021, 022, 023, 024, 024A, 024B, 025, 026, 027, 028, and 076B. Ward 18, Section 100, Block 0219, Lots 001, 002, 003, 004, 005, 006, 007, 008, 009, 010, 011, 012, 013, 014, 016, 017, 018, 019, 020, 021, 022, 023, 024, 025, 026, 027, 028, 030, 031, 032, 033, 034, 035, 036, 037, 038, 039, 040, 041, 042, 043, 044, 045, and 046. Granting an enhanced local property tax credit for the property and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, Bullock.
There you go. Thank you, Mr. Reader. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to be recusing myself on this bill.
Yes, sir. This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee. And, Mr. Young, I think that math degree of yours finally came into use today with all those numbers.
Thank you, Mr. President. City Council Bill 20-0504, Charter Amendment, City Council Composition, for the purpose of increasing the size of the city council to 15 members elected from districts, requiring that the city council president be elected by the city council from among its members every two years, clarifying the terms and the manner of the, of election for the city, for the council vice president and the council representative to the planning commission, allowing for the city council to remove a member from the position of president, specifying that the city council can elect an individual to fulfill a mayoral vacancy, conforming and clarifying related provisions, and submitting this amendment to the qualified voters of the city for adoption or rejection. Sponsors, Dorsey, Henry, Snead, Reisenger.
Chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. Baltimore is unique in its structure to its council, to its legislative body. I don't know any other city that elects one at-large council president, and that's the only at-large member in the body. The council president, no critique of current, present company, of course, but fundamentally, structurally, is somebody who has zero accountability to this body, is not representative of this body in roles such as their position on the Board of Estimates. They're not representative of this body. They have no need to be. It's not somebody who's put in place by this body, yet they're given power to wield influence and, and, and hold power over this body. That, to me, is essentially the fundamental, that's the definition of anti-democratic, an institution in which one side has all the power and the other side has none of the power. Baltimore is unique in this. Other jurisdictions surrounding us, Baltimore County, Montgomery County, jurisdictions in other states, St. Louis, New York City, their members elect their speaker. Their members elect the presiding officer over that body, and in that, the presiding officer becomes truly representative of the body and the will of the people that elect the majority of the members of the body. For instance, we could elect a council president with a small plurality of the voters in the city. That's not a majority. That's not a democratic representation necessarily of the people of Baltimore City, but allowing the council to elect the presiding officer may yield a different result. This bill changes this body, not in number, but in structure. We're 15 members today. This bill will keep us as 15 members by creating a 15th district, and, and that a council president will be chosen every two years by the members of this body, as would a vice president and a planning commission representative. And in the event of a vacancy in the mayor's office, this body would also choose somebody to fill that vacancy. This is just like other jurisdictions all over work. On the passing of Kevin Kaminitz in Baltimore County, their county council elected somebody to fill that vacancy. They chose a, to elect their county administrator to fill the vacancy in the, the office of the county executive. This bill would have us do the same thing, do something similar to what other jurisdictions do, instead of being the only place that operates like Baltimore's, like this. I would also say that in decentralizing power, all the people who work in the council president's office would truly become employees of the office of the council president, that there would, that the office could have greater independence, not so much being employees of the council president, but so much as the office of the council president. I think that that's an important distinction. So, I thank the folks for introducing, for, for co-sponsoring this bill tonight, and I look forward to hearing this, having this bill heard, and Councilman Henry's committee. Thank you, Mr. Council President.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Equity and Structure Committee. Resolutions to be introduced.
City Council Resolution 20-0199R, Informational Hearing, Well-being of the Transgender Community in Baltimore, for the purpose of inviting representatives from the mayor's office, the health department, the Baltimore Police Department, Baltimore City Public Schools, mayor's office of homeless services, the mayor's office of employment development, the Baltimore City Office of Equity and Civil Rights, the Baltimore City State's Attorney's Office, the Baltimore City Department of Social Services, the Maryland State Health Department, and Behavioral Health Systems Baltimore to update the council on services provided to and the general well-being of the transgender community in Baltimore. Sponsors, President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisenger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, excuse me, no Stokes, Costello, Snead, Clark.
Please add Councilman Stokes as a co-sponsor. Thank you. Thank you to all of my colleagues for your co-sponsorship. I often talk about the two Baltimore's, the Baltimore that everyone knows and then the forgotten Baltimore, and I recognize that for far too long, the members of our transgender community have been a part of the forgotten Baltimore and have been ignored and overlooked by their own city government. As a part of my commitment to equity, I'm calling in all of our city agencies, our advocate and community members, to shed light on the health and service disparities that is being experienced by our transgender community, but more importantly, to focus on what we can do to ensure that they are given the support that they need, not just to survive, but to thrive in a great city called Baltimore. So, thank you for your co-sponsorship, and I look forward to a great committee hearing in Councilman Burnett's health committee. This has been assigned to the health committee.
City Council Resolution 20-2020R, Request for State Action, Allow Our Sheriffs to Collectively Bargain, for the purpose of calling on the Maryland General Assembly to pass and the governor to sign Senate Bill 823, which would extend to the offices of the Baltimore City Sheriff the basic and fundamental right to collectively bargain wages and working conditions. Sponsors, Schleifer, President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisenger, Costello, Snead, Clark.
Please add Councilman Stokes as a co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilman Schleifer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to introduce this resolution. Our sheriff's department, they work really hard. A lot of people, when you talk about what the sheriff's department does, you'll hear some variation of, oh, they, you know, they run the courthouse and they're involved in that, but we all know in this body, the sheriff's department does a whole lot more than that. There's actually a big list of what they do, and we're going to put it up online, but they really do a lot of fundamental work that we need done in the city. They are a major part of the crime fight as well, and they play a key role in that, and they should be treated as such. And so, this resolution is just calling to support the Senate Bill 823, that's giving these, these, these good men and women who are working hard for us, the opportunity to have the same rights that many other agencies have. And so, I want to thank some of the sheriff members that are with us today for their work, and I'd like to suspend the rules to allow for immediate adoption.
Without objection, the rules will be suspended. The rules are suspended. Roll call.
President Scott.
Yes.
Councilman Cohen. Councilwoman McCray. Councilman Dorsey. Councilman Henry. Councilman Schleifer.
Yes.
Vice President Middleton. Councilman Pinkett. Councilman Burnett. Councilman Bullock. Councilman Reisenger. Councilman Costello. Councilman Stokes. Councilwoman Snead. Councilwoman Clark.
Thank you. The motion is approved. This resolution has been adopted. Consent calendar, you can find consent calendar in Section A at the back of the agenda. Without objection, the consent calendar will be approved. The consent calendar is approved. Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
Mr. President, I move short titles for the remainder of the meeting.
Without objection, we will read short titles for the remainder of the meeting. Short titles for the remainder of the meeting. Committee reports. We will now move to bills on second, Reader, Land Use Committee.
City Council Bill 19-0368, rezoning, 1141 Poplar Grove Street.
Chair recognizes Councilman Reisenger.
Mr. President, I move the finding of facts.
Without objection, the finding of fact will be adopted. The findings of fact are adopted. Chair recognizes Councilman Reisenger.
I move the bill favorable.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye. All opposed say nay. Please note, Councilwoman Clark as a nay. The motion is approved. This bill... All those in favor of approving this bill say aye. All opposed say nay. Please note Councilwoman Clark as a nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to Third Reader, Public Safety Committee.
City Council Bill 19...
Twenty.
Excuse me, 20-0486, Private Security Camera System Rebate Program Establishment.
Chair recognizes Councilman Schleifer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to waive Rule 10-11 to move this bill to Second Reader on the same day it was approved by the committee.
Without objection, the rules... Oh, yeah, we have amendments.
All right, the committee heard this bill on January 30th, 2020, and held a work session today. There are amendments on your desk. Move to move those amendments.
All those in favor of approving the amendments say aye. All opposed say nay. The amendments are approved. Chair recognizes Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. President. So on the members' desk is a second set of amendments, or a second amendment that was not offered in committee, so I'd like to, well, I'll take a chance to explain. So the amendment on your desk adds additional clarifying language on the size of a business that would be able to apply for the rebate program. And it would limit the applicable size to be businesses under twenty-five employees in a given fiscal year. My understanding, and I take a step back, supportive of the bill. I think it's a great idea. It's something that my constituents have come to me in support of, expanding access to security systems in their neighborhood. In fact, I was just helping one of my constituents last night, set up a camera at her house. You know, all duties are assigned as a council member, I guess. And, but my concern was is that, you know, the, this should be for residential uses primarily. This should be for small businesses and communities that all of us represent, corner stores, mom and pop shops. The bill as written, unamended, would open this program up to large institutions, large hospitals, nonprofits, large corporate entities, large businesses, that may not necessarily need a subsidy. And it's my position and my hopeful position that others will join me in that they should, at least in this iteration of the bill, should be given priority for small businesses and residence, residential uses. And so the amendment on your desk adds that clarification. And I'd like to make a motion to move the amendment on your desk.
This chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to respond to the amendment that's been proposed by the councilman from the eighth district. First, as the councilman's aware from the hearing earlier, and I know that he's read the bill, there's a component for equity built into this bill, okay? And specifically, that component on equity deals with level of violence in neighborhoods, and it deals with average median household income in those neighborhoods. And there is prioritization built into the bill based on each of those two factors. Secondly, there's a component for vouchers. For those individuals who are not able to afford the hundred and fifty dollars upfront that would cost for one of these cameras, there is a voucher component built in, recognizing that there are people in our city that may not be able to afford the upfront cost, and this takes care of that. Additionally, there is prioritization for the issuance of those vouchers over individuals who normally could afford it and would not be eligible for those vouchers. The purpose of this bill isn't about who can afford a camera, and it's not about who can't afford a camera. The purpose of this bill is to put more cameras up to aid police department in public safety throughout the city. It's to incentivize those who would normally, not otherwise, purchase and install one of these cameras to create an extra set of eyes in their neighborhood. That's what the purpose of this bill is. It's not to make it more affordable or less affordable or anything else, but those things are important. And I believe that this bill does accomplish those things. What this bill does at the end of the day is it creates an opportunity for every single person in this city to be a part of this program and to participate, irrespective of their income, irrespective of whether they can afford one, irrespective of whether they cannot afford one, irrespective of whether or not they don't even have the money upfront to participate. The way that this bill is written, as amended by the committee, with the amendments that Chairman Schleifer just passed earlier, establishes a program where all of those things work. And I would argue that when we talk about who's purchasing these cameras, these cameras aren't necessarily to the benefit of the individual entity or the individual business or the individual homeowner who has purchased these cameras. These cameras are for the benefit of all of us, all of those in a surrounding neighborhood. Now, I certainly recognize there are many of us in our city, whether we are residents or business owners or part of an institution, who can afford these cameras. And I certainly recognize that there are others of us who are not able to afford these cameras. But again, what we've done is establish a program where everyone has a fair chance, it's a level playing field where they can participate. But that misses the point of this bill. The point of this bill is to ensure that we have more cameras up to aid the police department, whether it's through investigation or apprehension and arrest or prosecution of violent crimes in our neighborhood. And it doesn't matter whether or not someone can afford it or not. The point is, is that by having the camera, it creates a benefit for all of us in the city. So for those reasons, Mr. President and colleagues, I'm opposed to this amendment.
Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm sorry I was not able to be at the work session this morning. Is there a cap in this bill in some fashion where we're only doing certain, a certain amount of rebates in each year? Because absent a cap, I'm unclear about the effect of prioritization.
Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. To the councilman from the fourth district's question, there is not a cap, but there are different levels of prioritization that are created. There are two ways to fund this bill. One is through grant funding, and the other is through the normal appropriations process, through the ordinance of estimates, which, of course, we're all familiar with. The administration has agreed to take a amount of existing grant funding that is earmarked for public safety purposes and put it towards this as a pilot. There has been no determination that I'm aware of made by the administration, unless that has changed since their testimony at twelve o'clock today as to future appropriations to this program. So in other cities, I can tell you, in DC, there's a certain amount of appropriation every single year. And then when that appropriation runs out, applications are closed. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Chair recognizes Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. President. So again, I'll try to move it, but just to clarify my position on this, I think it gets to Councilman Henry's point, is really what I'm trying to convey is that with a large institution, they're going to have professional staff, legal team, management that can apply for this program and would likely be aware of the program and the ability to use the program at a rate, at a pace, outpacing, you know, she's probably watching, Ms. Odessa, who used to live across the street from me, who may not have a printer at her house, may not have, you know, a scan to get the form in. And so my concern is that without any caps, this creates an unlevel playing field where large institutions get to take advantage of a program that I think most of us would agree is appropriate for residential use and small business use, but for large institutions, that level of playing field does not exist. The other thing I would add is that, again, I'm no tax attorney, but large institutions can already write off as a business expense, security cameras or security equipment or capital equipment. So I'm at a loss as to why we want to add yet another subsidy or potential subsidy for large institutions. And again, this is my focus here. If you have twenty-five employees or more, which is the language that we define a larger, or larger business by the state of Maryland, this body alone, when we passed the minimum wage bill in 2017, defined small business as being under twenty-five employees. And I think we can all agree that small businesses do need help. Residents in East and West Baltimore and Northeast Baltimore, who are everyday working citizens, senior citizens, do need help. I'm not sure that the same would apply for a chain of Seven Elevens or a Target. I don't know that they, I mean, not that they don't, you know, need some assistance as well, but I think when we talk about a subsidy, which is what we're discussing here today, I think the priority should be given to small business and everyday residents in the city of Baltimore. I think, I see hands rising, Mr. President, so before I make a motion, I think other folks would like to weigh in. So I'm going to sit down.
Chair recognizes, in this order, Councilman Bullock, Councilman Schleifer, Councilman Dorsey, Councilman Cohen, Councilman Costello. That's the order that your hands went up.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to my colleagues as well. Respectfully, I understand all the points that are being made. Definitely understand the fact that we want to have more cameras that are having eyes in terms of some of the activities going on in our city. Definitely understand as it relates to the different commercial interests. But it seems as if the narrow issue in front of us now is really how we're defining commercial interest and the size of the businesses at hand. So again, I intend to second the motion. But again, I respect the place where everyone's coming from, but it seems like we're just talking about the size of a business. Thank you, Mr. President.
Chair recognizes Councilman Schleifer.
Thank you, Mr. President. So as stated during the hearing today, and I agree, you know, there's very large businesses don't necessarily need, you know, a hundred and fifty dollars from the camera. So I get that. I think the devil's in the details here with how we define things. And so as it is, there's already, the administration already gets to go through and see who should be prioritized and what areas need it the most. But, you know, I brought up some real examples from my district where there's been multiple shootings in specific locations where there's small businesses that could really use these cameras on the exterior of their property, which is what this bill is for. Most of these small businesses have been prioritizing the cameras inside their establishment and not the cameras outside. And so the intention of this bill is to help on the outside of the perimeter. And I had been on the scene of a shooting where we had, the police department and investigators had issues finding out who was involved, simply because they didn't have cameras in those specific areas. The businesses only had them on the inside. Now, the detail that is troubling and that would prohibit these businesses that are in high-crime areas that are technically small businesses, is number two, that it's not a subsidiary of another entity. And what we know in our communities is that a lot of the corner stores and a lot of the gas stations, you know, technically, they can be subsidiaries of another entity. You could have the same individual, you know, might have one umbrella organization or company, and then he has subsidiaries that own specific corner stores where individually, they're not profitable enough and considered small businesses to be able to purchase cameras on the perimeters, which is why they don't already have cameras on the perimeters. And so that simple line, number two, would prohibit businesses that we need to aid in our investigations from having cameras. And so, you know, unless number two is stripped from this, I simply can't support this amendment.
Councilman Dorsey.
I was just going to second the motion on the amendment.
He hasn't made the motion yet, sir.
He did make a motion.
No, he doesn't. He did. Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Generally, I'm supportive of this program. It's done, cameras have been instrumental in perpetrating folks who've been arrested in my district. There's been a lot of organizing among community around cameras. However, I am disappointed in sort of a lack of clarity from the administration on how much is going to be spent on this initial pilot. Just as a, as someone who cares a lot about every dollar, who knows that the price tag of Kerwin is deep, who understands that this is grant-funded, public safety money, but it's still going to have to be paid for. And so I had asked in a previous hearing what it was going to cost, what the pilot program was going to cost, whether there were grants that MOCJ could track down to help to defray some of the costs ultimately for this. The lack of clarity from the finance department this morning was very disappointing. I've received a call from folks in the administration, but, you know, I generally am supportive of increasing cameras for personal use because I've seen them be effective. But I had wanted to see more numbers, and so just wanted to express my own concern about the lack of clarity on financing this.
Chair recognizes Councilman Costello quickly.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, to my colleague from the eighth district's point, the way that the bill is currently structured, there is prioritization that is built in. First, prioritization goes to those that are eligible for vouchers. After that prioritization, it goes to neighborhoods that have low-income household median averages. After that, it goes to neighborhoods that have high violent crime. So there is a plethora of prioritization that is already built into this bill that I believe adequately addresses the concerns that you've raised over whether or not those who can afford it versus those who cannot afford it are being given the opportunity to purchase it. And I would also point out to my colleague from the first district, you know, it's a bit ironic because this council has passed legislation in the last year in which we've had a hundred and nine million dollar discrepancy between what BBMR's fiscal impact note is versus the fiscal impact note that was provided to the state just a year earlier. And when I made a stink about that and raised that as a concern back in January of 2019, that bill was pushed right through with many of my colleagues that are here today. So I find it somewhat ironic that we are arguing here over a hundred and fifty dollars for something that has a proven benefit to our neighborhood. And as the councilman from the first district is very aware because there's a very successful version of this program in his district. This has led to not only aided investigation and apprehension and conviction of perpetrators of violent crime in neighborhoods, it has proven to be a deterrent for crime in neighborhoods. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, and thank you all for your dialogue today. I would just also remind everyone, all of my colleagues who are concerned about fiscal notes, that I have a piece of legislation pending that will require fiscal notes on every piece of legislation. Chair recognizes Councilman Burnett.
Mr. President, I would like to move the amendment.
All those in favor of the amendment say aye. All opposed say nay. Roll call.
President Scott.
Yes.
Councilman Cohen. Councilwoman McCray. Councilman Dorsey. Councilman Henry. Councilman Schleifer. Vice President Middleton. Councilman Pinkett. Councilman Burnett. Councilman Bullock. Councilman Reisinger. Councilman Costello. Councilman Stokes. Councilwoman Snead. Councilwoman Clark. Four ayes, eleven ayes.
The ayes have it. Chair recognizes Councilman Schleifer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move the bill favorable as amended.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye. All opposed say nay. Please note Councilman Dorsey as a no. All right. Third reader for final passage.
City Council Bill 18-0285, Police Ortenances, Repealing the Prohibition on Playing in the Street. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
Chair, please note Councilman Clark as a no. Please note Councilman Costello as a no. Councilman Stokes as a no. Councilman Pinkett as a no. Roll, roll call again, please. Pay attention, members, or you will be marked as a yes.
City Council Bill 18-0285, Police Ortenances, Repealing the Prohibition on Playing in the Street. President Scott.
Keep going.
Councilman Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
Please note Councilman Pinkett, Councilman Costello, Councilman Stokes, Councilwoman Clark, Councilman Schleifer as a no's, this, Councilman Middleton as a no. This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 19-0378, Ethics Board Administration and Staff. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 19-0425, Corrective Bill 2019, Zoning. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 19-0426, Rezoning. City Council Bill nineteen dash zero-four-two-six, Rezoning, Block PSCO Lot Zero-eight-five. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero-four-six-three, Rezoning, Block seven-seven-six-two, Lots zero-zero-one to zero-zero-seven. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved. Committee announcements. Please note that the June's first meeting of the Baltimore City Council will be changed to Monday, June the eighth. Committee announcements. Councilman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Housing Urban Affairs Committee will be having a hearing on April twenty-first, starting at three PM. We'll be hearing a city council ordinance, or city council resolution, Midtown Benefit, Midtown Community Benefits District and Management Authority renewal through June, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, and that's City Council Bill two-zero-zero-four-eight-four. That'll be at three PM, followed at three-ten PM by Port Covington Benefit, Port Covington District, Port Covington Community Benefits District Management Authority, again at three-ten PM, and that is Council Bill zero, two-zero-zero-four-six-five. Also, on April twenty-first, at three-twenty PM, we'll be hearing City Council Bill two-zero-zero-four-seven-seven, Silo Way Surcharges Exemption. Also announcing hearings for May twelfth, beginning at three o'clock PM. First, we'll be hearing Council Bill nineteen zero-four-three-six, which is City Streets Closing, Three-Ten-Foot Alleyies. That'll be followed at three-oh-five PM on May twelfth. City Council Bill nineteen zero-four-three-seven, City Streets Opening North Durham Street. And lastly, at three-ten, we'll be having City Council Bill nineteen zero-four-three-eight, which is City Streets Closing North Durham Street in a sixteen-foot alley. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Sneed.
Uh, the Labor Committee would like to remind everyone that the committee will hold a Legislative Oversight Work Session nineteen dash zero-zero-five-three, the Fire Department Staff Inauguration Plan, and on Thursday, March fifth, twenty twenty, at one PM. The purpose of this Oversight Work Session is to have the Fire Department brief the Labor Committee and any council member who wishes to attend on the upcoming hiring process, and to ensure that there's accountability, equity, and transparency in finding the most talented and diverse candidates for the staff, to staff our Fire Department.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Health Committee will hold the following hearings for Council Resolution twenty-dash-zero-one-nine-four-R, informational hearing on Baltimore Strategic Response for the Wuhan Coronavirus on Tuesday, March seventeenth, twenty twenty, at two PM. Also, we will have a hearing on Council Bill twenty dash zero-four-nine-five, Pesticide Control and Regulation, on Tuesday, March twenty-fourth, at ten-oh-five AM. And for Council Resolution twenty dash zero-one-nine-five-R, informational hearing, Missing Persons, on Tuesday, May twelfth, twenty twenty, at ten AM. The hearings will be in the council chambers and are open to the public.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
Mr. President, the Land Use Committee will hold a hearing on Bill twenty dash zero-four-eight-two on Wednesday, March the eighteenth, at one PM in the council chambers. This is exclusionary housing requirements sunset extension. Also, the committee will hold a hearing on Bill nineteen dash zero-four-one-seven, Wednesday, March the twenty-fifth, at one PM in the council chambers. This is zoning. It's a conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R eight zoning district with variances located at fourteen-ten West Saratoga Street. The committee will also hold a hearing on Bill nineteen dash zero-four-seven-four on Wednesday, April the eighth, at one PM in the council chambers. This is a rezoning at thirty-nine-twenty-five Golf Street. Thank you, Mr. President.
Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Budget and Appropriations Committee schedule for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one hearings. The Budget and Appropriations Committee is setting aside the following dates and times for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one budget hearings. Wednesday, May twenty-seventh, three to five PM. That'll be the budget overview with Bureau of Budget and Management Research and Baltimore City Public School System. Then on later that day, Wednesday, May twenty-seventh, at five PM, will be City Council's Taxpayers Night. And then budget hearings will be Monday, June first, through Friday, June fifth, nine AM through nine PM in council chambers. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Schleifer.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Safety Committee will hold a hearing on Council Bill nineteen dash zero-four-three-one on March seventeenth, at four PM, for towing, licensing, and regulation at the request of Councilman Dorsey.
Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Equity and Structure Committee is rescheduling a hearing for twenty dash zero-four-nine-two, Charter Amendment, City Council Reduction in Size, to Thursday, March fifth, at ten AM, here in the council chambers. I move to suspend Rules ten-two and ten-three to announce a hearing.
Well, filed objection, the rules will be suspended. The rules are suspended. Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Equity and Structure Committee will hear twenty dash zero-five-zero-four Charter Amendment, City Council Composition, on Thursday, March fifth, at ten-oh-one AM, here in the council chambers. The Equity and Structure Committee would like to also remind everyone that the committee will be hearing the following charter amendments this Wednesday, February twenty-sixth, at five PM, here in the council chambers. Number twenty dash zero-four-eight-nine Charter Amendment, Board of Estimates Composition, and twenty dash zero-four-nine-one Charter Amendment, City Auditor Powers, Powers and Duties. The committee will also be holding its second work session on Monday, March second, at six-thirty PM, at Edmondson West Side High School, located at five-oh-one North Athol Avenue, zip code two-one-two-two-nine. Thank you.
Thank you. Committee announcements. Regular announcements. I will first start by asking that the council vice president, on a moment of silence for the now forty-six individuals that we've lost to homicide in Baltimore this year, and those and their families, and also all those that we lose to the opioid overdose epidemic as well. Regular announcements. Anyone else? Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for a moment of si, silence for Francis Laurie, father of Archbishop William Laurie, who passed away yesterday at the age of ninety-nine. Thank you, Mr. President.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Moment of silence for Tyra Huggins, who passed away this last week, and she was ninety-six years old, so, yes.
Chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. Doubly so. I want to encourage everybody to go out to this new, there's a play that I went to, I've been to it twice, actually. I went opening night, and it was so good, I went again. It's actually not a play, it's an opera. It's kind of a co-production of the Acme Corporation Theater and a local band called Horse Lords. And it's at the newest theater in town, which is a really cool place called The Vauxhall. It's the old autograph playhouse on Twenty-Fifth Street between Charles and Maryland Avenue. And this is the first production in this new place. It's a black box theater that's owned by the people at Figure Fifty-three, which, which is a locally-based company that produces software that's used around the world for the real-time lighting, sound, and video integration with live performances. So they have really unique capabilities. The theater itself serves by day as kind of the testing center and research grounds for that company's software Q-Lab. And then by night, and as may be necessary, it is an operational theater for companies like Acme Corporation. It is called The First Thing That Happens, and you can buy tickets for as little as ten bucks, or pay more, but you don't get a better seat if you pay more money. Good socialism at work, or something like that, I don't know. And it was just really, it was a really great production. It's only forty-five minutes long, and this is the last weekend to see it, Thursday through Sunday at eight PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Council Vice President Middleton.
The next meeting of the city council will be held on Monday, March ninth, twenty twenty, at five PM. May we have a moment of silence for Francis Laurie, Tyra Higgins, also the family of Keenan Jeter, lost his father suddenly, Ken Jeter, in a car hit-and-run. And also, the forty-six, the families of the forty-six victims of homicide and our continued opioid epidemic.
There being no further business, this concludes the seventy-eighth meeting of the seventy-second term of the Baltimore City Council.